I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank everyone who are attending the council meeting Tuesday, May 21st. All my colleagues are here along with a contingent from the auditor's office. We've got a lot to accomplish tonight, but I think we can do this efficiently and...
Timely.
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 Okay, timely. So, we've got efficiency. I look at efficiency. First on the agenda is our public hearing on the lit tax increase for EMS. And I will read this ordinance as it is, and then I will open the public meeting. It's ordinance 04162024, B as in boy. Ordinance modifying local income tax rates for Fulton County. Be it ordained by the county council of Fulton County that a need now exists to modify the local income tax rates imposed in the following way. And it's certified shares, existing lit's 1.0, proposed 1.0. Public safety is .55 percent, proposed is .55 percent. Economic development is .20 percent, proposed lit rate is .20 percent. Property tax relief is .48 percent, proposed is .48 percent. The special purpose rate is .25 percent, the proposed lit rate is .25 percent. Correctional and rehabilitation facilities is .2 percent, proposed is .2 percent. Emergent chief medical service is .00, the proposed rate is .20 percent. And staff expenses for state judicial system is .0, proposed rate is .0. The local income tax rate proposed above will become effective on October 1st, 2024. And then we'll be it further ordained that a public hearing was held on proposal income tax rate modifications on May 21st, 2024. Proper notice of public hearing was provided pursuant to IC code 5-3-1. So at this time, I don't feel I have to worry about decorum and to say those things. So I will now open the hearing to a public hearing. Comments from the public and or board members, public first. Is there anyone has any comments?
Well, it's a done deal, right?
We're open to comments. So...
Pointless.
Okay, if that's... First, please, your name.
Annette Yan.
Thank you very much. But, you know, is it pointless?
Well, I mean, it's decided, so...
Well, that's why we're having a public hearing.
What public?
Again, that's not... It was published in the paper. And I don't think I saw it in the shop or something, maybe I did. I know it was published in the paper, by law, it has to be.
And nobody reads the paper anymore.
That I can argue about.
I know, that's true.
Board members?
Like we've discussed before, it's kind of a necessary... No one wants to do it, but we need to...
But if everyone wants ambulance service, then it's got to be paid for.
No one's excited to raise taxes, but we have to generate revenue to provide an ambulance service.
That's true.
What's all that in English, then?
Well, what's all that?
Okay. What do you mean, what's all this in English?
All this ever... What's the actual increase going to be for an individual or whoever?
It's going to increase by .2 percent, which before, as we talked before, and again, an average of a $50,000 invoice. It'll be about a hundred bucks a year.
Two tenths of one percent.
Two tenths of one percent. Yes, yes, that's correct.
Got it, all that other stuff, I don't...
Well, this is what we're collecting now. This is debt, and the proposed rate of that did not increase. The only thing that increased was the emergency medical service.
So just the...
That's what the state has allowed us to do, to generate.
So we're still back to the... Yeah.
Yeah, that's correct. No, that's fine, absolutely. Any other comments?
When did you say it was effective?
October 1st of this year.
Will this generate enough to cover the expenses that need it?
We hope, but we don't know for sure. It's going to be close. But if it doesn't, we can absorb the rest. I heard a question last evening at the commissioners' meeting about property taxes. And at this time, no. I say that at this time, but as it stands right now, no. Property taxes will not have to be increased to cover the EMS service per se. Again, we hope.
Is there an estimate on how much this will... How much revenue this will generate?
Somewhere in the vicinity of a million dollars a year. Again, it depends on our median income and, you know, the tax rate. We have talked, or we feel that income tax would draw for more people. Because property taxpayers, there are more people working than are property taxpayers. So therefore, this kind of covers the bill more with income than it would with property. And property taxes, kind of, they're saddled with enough.
Well, and I think if doing it with the local income tax, then everyone, more people share... I don't want to say burden, but everyone shares in having the ambulance service, rather than just people that pay property taxes. That's my feeling.
Another question?
No, absolutely.
I mean, well, I should not say this, but I'm gonna... I talked to like Jack Jordan here a month or so ago. And he's telling me, I mean, he's aware, the whole states have the same problem.
With ambulance services.
Yeah, all counties around, everybody's having the same thing. And the states, he said, they're gonna look at it hopefully next year and...
In the general assembly?
Not promise anything, but maybe start helping out. Say if we would get, save more money from the state, can we rescind this? If we, you know, if we do get enough to cover it from state or federal... I talked to Rudy Yakim also, and he was saying the same thing. He's aware, everybody's aware of the problem. If we would ever, you know, the next few years, if we can get, you know, state or federal funding to take, can we rescind this then?
I would assume. This is not to be... This is only good for 22 years. I mean, there is a time limit on the amount that we can either use this. So in 22 years, figure out another way to pay for ambulance service.
Yeah, but I mean, say in the next two, three years, if we would get some federal or state funding to help offset it, can we rescind this so we can get our local people's... Like I know, I know nothing's promised or don't even count on it, but just if, what if, whatever, you know what I mean?
No, absolutely, and I hope that we can do that.
Yeah.
That would give us time also to see exactly the numbers that we get in income. And see how that is going to affect our budget overall. And, but yeah, no, that's... The ones I've talked to, you know, this year wasn't a budget year.
Right.
So therefore, they weren't going to talk money down with state. Next year is a budget year, and so that would be the time to bring it up.
Right, and like Jack said, they were gonna bring it up, but not promising nothing, of course, you know, but just that they would.
No, absolutely, it's a good question.
They will, I mean, he'll come help with it, and I'll just, you know...
And it's a good thing that our legislators are aware that this is a problem throughout the state.
Statewide, even countrywide. Rudy Yakim said the same thing, the whole country's having the same thing.
Yeah, yeah, so this isn't particular to us, unfortunately. I have no other questions or comments.
Well, should I explain some of the costs involved in this?
That's up to you.
I'm going to attempt to cover some of the costs. Gail can help me out on some on this. I was hoping Rick could be here, so he could help me out. But of course, everyone knows that the... Well, they don't know, but the commissioners signed a contract last night with Parkview.
They didn't sign?
Well, they approved the contract. That's... I'm sorry, my wording is wrong. They approved the contract with Parkview EMS service to handle our EMS and ambulance service from July 1 of this year. For technically, it'd be a four and a half year contract.
Correct.
The first year of the contract is, runs at $100,000 a month. That's a stipend we have to pay Parkview for them to provide the ambulance service. They put three ambulances in Akron, Rochester, Kewona. There'll be a fourth spare ambulance in Rochester, and also a paramedic chase truck. Is that correct?
No, there's three ambulances and a chase truck.
Three ambulances and a chase truck, okay. And we've gone through so many contracts, change it up again. Now, Parkview does their business model different. Fulton County is purchasing the ambulances. And large ticket items, capital assets is the word they use. We have to purchase those. We, Parkview will purchase them, we reimburse Parkview. Up to a maximum of 1.2 million dollars over two years. Should something happen in the next four years that we decide, they decide to back out, we decide to back out, those assets are the county's. That's the way they do their business model. They do their business model as a partnership, not as a vendor. So, so that's where we stand. This first six months from July 1 to December 31 is $100,000 a month. That's all the numbers we have. Their idea is based on staffing. Ambulances, first thought, we're probably two years out to get ambulances. And now they're thinking it could be a lot less.
Forty-four days.
Forty-four days, okay.
Could be forty-three.
They thought they had three sitting based on whether or not we approved the contract. And so until then, they will put used ambulances in there that we do not pay for. We do not have to pay for used demo ambulances. All we pay for is the new ones. When the new, and with their purchasing power, they could have purchased a cot, you know, the cots. They, I'm gonna say Lucas Device, because I can't think the name of the other one.
It's their rating, they get a better rate.
They get better rates, they get better... Parkview takes care of all the insurance. So we are not liable or, you know, the comprehensive and all that, that's Parkview's. So those are the basic numbers of what we talked about. Again, there is a maximum of 1.2... Anything over 1.2 million dollars, that's on Parkview.
Your capital asset list will have the VIN number in it. So whatever purchases over a $5,000 purchase will be established under capital asset form.
And they have to go through us to approve.
Yeah, so that has to be filled out before the check goes to Parkview with the VIN number. So we get those back in case the contract is ended. The equipment that being purchased and not something that's 20 years old.
So how long do we have to pay the head cost ambulance, as you say?
Forty-five days from the ambulance purchase. Forty-five days from the monthly stipend.
Correct.
Is, we got, we got time, because what to do is we have, the commissioners have to prove the claim, then we have to prove the claim. So we wanted to build in time in there so that we could, you know, do it without putting ourselves in...
So you're talking about the 100,000, 100 grand a month, or the...
Both.
Okay, so the 1.2 for the ambulances, we had to come up with that?
Well, as an ambulance is delivered. We don't have to come up with it all at once. We only pay for things that are delivered. The big question was, all of a sudden, they said, well, yeah, we can get three. So, but the three ambulances aren't 1.2 million dollars. But yes, it is, because we were hoping we could spread the ambulances out over time, of course, to help our finances, all we could.
Do we have a cost of the other capital assets then, too? Like how much we might be looking at?
No, we really don't, because we don't know the cost of cots or the CPR machines. But everything over $5,000 is considered a capital asset. And he even said, Chad even said in one meeting, quite possibly won't be 1.2 million dollars.
Correct.
Because of their purchasing power and their ability to negotiate pricing. And they have to come to us for approval to purchase that.
So you're saying no more than 1.2 million?
That's correct.
Okay.
So some of those ambulances at their rate are 250,000. So if you look at that with the chassis, and then obviously, we've purchased a Stryker cot before. They'll, ours was around 40 grand, though those will be a little less, obviously. And they'll put those in, but those are the assets that will belong on those rigs.
Any soft, soft costs, such as expendables and that, those are Parkview's to absorb as part of the contract.
Sounds good.
So, any other questions? If not, I will close this public meeting. And I will read this ordinance by title only. This is the third and final reading. Ordinance 04162024, B as in boy. Ordinance modifying local income tax rates of Fulton County. I will accept a motion to approve.
I will move to approve the ordinance for the increase in the lit EMS tax.
Fill motion to approve, we have a second. Lori seconding. All in favor, right hand, please. It'd be 7-0. Thank you very much, everybody. And I'm sorry, I agree with you, public hearing should be public. But if you can't get anyone to come, that's what it is. But thank you for attending. And we have to sign signatures.
Sign and pass.
And then next on the agenda is 24 salary ordinance amendment. And I'll read this on the title, and then I'll go to the section that...
That's amended.
That's amended, that's good, thank you. Ordinance 12122023. It's First Amendment of the ordinance amending county Fulton, Indiana salary schedule and compensation policy for 2024. And if we go to communications, well, the Personnel Policy Committee...
The Job Classification Committee?
Yeah, that thing. Job Classification Committee, I'm sorry. Voted to increase the number of dispatch, full-time dispatchers from eight to nine. Is that correct?
Yes, we did.
That's okay. And at a rate of $21.99 an hour. That is the only part of this that changed. So I entertain a motion to approve this amendment as read.
All move to approve.
They'll move to approve. Steve moved to second. All in favor? 6-0. Pete upstands. There's one thing we're gonna do. Next is a change in the Fedco agreement. And I will read this, it's the agreement for 2024 Economic Development Services. This fee is for service agreement is effective January 1 of 2024, and by in between Fulton County and the Fulton County Economic Development Corporation and Indiana Private Not-for-Profit Corporation. Fulton County desires to maintain a viable and respected economic development presence that conducts programs and activities for future economic development and growth in accordance with county needs and long-term goals. The Fulton County Economic Development Corporation agrees to provide certain standard, commonly accepted economic development services and services which result in a design and implementation of long-term projects relating to economic workforce and commercial, industrial, or related business developments in Fulton County. So this change in the agreement is, this agreement is from January 1, 2024 through 31st day of December, 2024. In return for the services enumerated herein, the county agrees to pay the Fulton County Economic Development a fixed sum of $130,000 toward the economic corporation 2024 budget, less than the North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council dues in the amount of $15,697. Fulton Economic Development Corporation has received payments in the amount of $18,383.34 to date, leaving a balance of $95,919.66 for 2024. The remaining balance will be split into eight remaining monthly payments to be made equal installments of $11,989.96. The reason for this change is that the North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council, of which Fulton County is a part of, that we are the only county that their economic development pays their dues. Every other county has this separated. And so that's why we're doing this. We included, it used to be called MACOG, but it's not that anymore. North Central Indiana Regional Planning Council dues...
In with Fedco.
In with Fedco, and Fedco paid it, but they want this separated. That is the reason we have to change this agreement.
So is it gonna end up the same as what we previously...
It's identical, it's, all it is is an accounting feature. Are there any questions? I'll entertain a motion to approve. Pete moved to approve, will take second. Randy seconding. All in favor, right hand, please. 7-0. Thank you very much. Again, we have...
Everybody signed?
I believe so.
Sign and pass.
We're busting right on.
We are, we're doing good.
Next on the agenda is the auditor's request. Casey's interested in this one. Oh, by the way, board, this is Casey Jones, he's in the auditor's office. I apologize for not... And this is the auditor's request. Part-time employee is reducing hours down to two days a week and will be retiring July 11. I have a new full-time employee who started work on April 29th. Another new full-time employee who's began work on May 13th. All three new employees will be working primarily at the counter and answering incoming calls. I've hired a part-time employee to replace the retiring employee. However, I would like to request to begin her on June 3rd to have plenty of time to train with the employee who is only available to work two days a week. I am also requesting additional time due to all three employees being experienced and new to county government. It would be helpful for all three of them to be in training and learn the same information together. I do not need additional funds for the overlap. Any questions?
So in essence, what she's asking is typically, they're given two weeks?
Yes.
But now she's asking for, I don't know, a month or whatever, additional time, and she's got the money in her budget to pay for that.
Yes, that she has money in her budget to cover it. So there's no additional cost to county?
Right, right.
And it gives the new employees a chance to earn?
You bet. And we want them to be successful.
Well, we want them to be successful, plus there's a lot to learn.
You betcha. So...
I don't think we have to, I think, oh, we just give a blessing, we don't need to vote on that, do we?
Let's vote.
Okay. I will entertain a motion to approve the auditor's request for overlap and pay at no cost to the county for the auditor's office. Steve approved, Steve to second. Lori seconded. All in favor? 7-0. Thank you very much. We don't need to sign that one. And Travis, you wanna stand up there? You wanna sit there while I read this, so we go through this? Because there's gonna be questions, I know there's gonna be questions.
Whatever you guys need.
And even though we have approved this already, commissioners made a change, therefore, we have to reapprove it as written. And so I will read this. And this is, and then after I read it, that will give Travis a chance to answer questions that are pertaining to this, because I know there's some coming. Ordinance 05212024 is amending the jail and detention center population general ordinance of 10192020. Whereas the county commissioners of Fulton County adopted General Ordinance Number 10192020, jail and detention center population ordinance on November 2nd, 2020, and the county council adopted on November 17th, 2020, to maximize revenues by offering available space to house out-of-county inmates at a negotiated per diem rate per person per day. And whereas ordinance 10192020 establishes the Fulton County Jail Facility Fund, Local Fund Number 4300, for collected per diem charges for use of unoccupied beds. And whereas 10192020 directs said funds collected to be placed in specific categories, 70% will be held for debt reduction. 15% will be held for maintenance of the jail facility, and 15% will be held for operation of the jail facility. Whereas it is necessary for keeping the funds separate for specified use to create additional local funds to hold charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates. And whereas it is necessary to divide the purpose of three total funds that will hold the charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates. Therefore, be it ordained to create and maintain a total of three funds to hold charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates for use as follows. Fund 4300, Fulton County Jail Facility Fund shall now be used for holding 70% of the charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates for a period of 10 years for the purpose of paying down the debt reduction in accordance with applicable Indiana codes and bond trustee guidelines. Fund 4301, Fulton County Jail Maintenance Fund shall be established for holding 15% of the charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates for maintaining the jail facility, jail facility grounds, equipment to be used for maintaining the facility and/or its grounds, building and/or maintaining storage space for equipment to be used for maintaining the facility and/or its grounds, or any other purpose the Fulton County Council approves. Fund 4302, Fulton County Jail Operations Fund shall be established to hold 15% of the charges collected for housing out-of-county inmates for supporting wages for all sheriff's department personnel, including employees of jail facility, the sheriff's department employees, merit deputies, benefits, supplemental wages, training, food, medical supplies, and staff. These funds may be utilized as requested by the Fulton County Sheriff and appropriated by the Fulton County Council. This ordinance shall be in full force and effect upon passage. So I know we have a couple of questions from up here.
Well, I've already...
Oh, I didn't know that.
I asked him what...
Sorry Travis.
No, you're fine.
So you might tell what precipitated this. I didn't know it was the commissioner, so if you.
So what, yeah, compared to what you guys signed at the last meeting versus tonight, Mr. Lewis, Commissioner Lewis wanted to add a couple of words on there with, he talked to Holly, and it basically was food, medical supplies, and staff is what he included in paragraph three. I think he just wanted to outline that a little more clear for future. And I don't think he foresees any issues with the current council, current commissioners, current sheriff, but just kind of locking that in that way. You know, it's going to be utilized for intended purpose.
That brings up a point. Had something happened at the sheriff's department where those, the food and whatever, medicals, where they weren't identified? How they, where they'd be paid from, or wasn't that?
Yeah, so our food service and our medical is under contract.
Right.
They're not county employees, so I think that was, I don't want to speak for him, but I think that's his thought process.
Okay.
Being able to utilize these funds for operational costs with a medical contract or food service.
Kind of narrow it down.
Right.
Okay. Okay. Makes sense.
Do you have a question? Do you understand what we're doing? Okay, all right.
I wasn't born yesterday.
No, I understand, I just wanted to make sure that everyone out here understands what we're doing. This is an accounting feature that.
It really got brought up because it was two parts. The funds, the original ordinance in 2020 said 15% should be placed in an operational fund, but that operational fund was never created.
Right.
Same thing with the maintenance, it was never created. So it's all put into a, to one fund, assuming that 15% could be taken out for these. And then operational fund and maintenance fund was never really defined. What is maintenance? What can we use that money for for maintenance? What can we use it for for operations? So that's all this is, is just basically defining what the intended purpose was in 2020 when the ordinance was passed, so.
And cleaning it up.
Cleaning it up.
Absolutely.
We like clean.
And right now we've got, I got the numbers here, so I want to use pictures.
You want the number for the, we've got?
Well, this is what I have right here. Balance adds up 430. And the 4300 fund is $725,918.
Right.
And change.
Yes, 15% of that would be 109,000 roughly. 109,000 for maintenance, 109,000 for operations.
And that grows every month?
Yeah, yeah, when we do the.
We'll talk about that. All right, so, any other questions? Anybody in public or here? If not, I will entertain a motion to adopt ordinance. Steve motion to approve, second. Randy moved to second. All in favor? Seven zero, thank you very much.
Well, if he stands there, he might go do the part.
That's exactly why I.
Yeah, that's plenty ahead of time.
Sorry.
Not at all.
Mostly, but not all.
Signatures.
Please.
Signatures.
So, go ahead Travis.
So reports, April reports, monthly reports mailed out, emailed out. I think yesterday. Any questions or anything on those collections report and everything? We did notice an increase in the inmate medical co-pay. That's a direct result of your guys' passing the ordinance to have the administrator pay a little bit more for their medical co-pay. So that off all the taxpayers, so, thank you. We're going to hopefully see that increasing more as that goes on, so. We had 130 inmates this morning. Seven federal inmates, 38 from Grant County, 45 from Howard County. Zero DOC holds now.
Grant.
Great, it's Grant and Howard County.
Yeah, so they're both.
I don't know about Grant.
Yeah, we got that ordinance passed last commissioners meeting, I think. They reached out to Kathy last month, they're overcrowded. Howard County's been overcrowded. The nice thing about that is, is there's no end in sight for them, so. Holding and make sure them for a definite period of time, so. We're pretty comfortable with where we're at right now, 130. Just as a reminder, we did contract with the marshal service for 50 beds. They've never been anywhere close to that, but we want to make sure those beds are available to them if they need it, so. At 130, we're pretty comfortable with classification of inmates and then keep separates and things like that. So it's not causing any undue stress on the staff right now, so. With that, we invoiced for 40, a little over 47,000 last month for out-of-county inmates. I foresee that to double next month, it'll be over 100,000 next month. And again, probably for the foreseeable future with Howard and Grant County utilizing our bed space. So, corrections on any of that, or questions on any of that? Yes, ma'am?
So, does that mean that you will, you think that the inmates from Grant and Howard will double?
No, I don't think, I'm saying our invoice, we've never held this many out-of-county inmates.
Okay.
So what we're invoicing out, we invoiced out 47,000 last month between DOC, the counties, and the feds. I foresee that doubling to over 100,000 a month for invoicing out, so.
This isn't putting any undue stress on staff?
I mean, we're adequately staffed, we've had to get some inmate supplies and things. She had to order more mattresses, more blankets. That'll be one of those things that we'll look at towards the end of the year, you know, when we're looking at the budget to see if we need to come and ask you guys for anything out of the operational funds from this to refute some of the losses on that. You know, right now we feel very comfortable. Food may be one of those things too that we may have to come back, so. But again, that's why that operational fund's there, so, you know, to offset the cost of housing these additional inmates, so. Yes, sir?
What is our max, refresh my, what's our max?
Absolute max is 230-ish, and I say ish because of the group holding. You know, it depends on who you ask, is how many people you can fit in there. We can't maintain any more than 80% for any extended period of time by jail standards.
80% of the 238?
Right, 230-ish, yeah.
Oh, wow. Okay.
If you have fluctuations, you know, daily fluctuations or things, I mean, that's one thing. But to maintain over 80%, you're going to start getting, you're going to start getting into issues that Grant, Howard County are into right now, so.
And then they get some of their people back.
Exactly, yeah, and that's, yeah, that's an easy fix for us, so.
Yeah, because we're not going to.
That's true, yeah.
Like I said, we're pretty comfortable where we're at right now, so.
Interesting.
Anything else on those?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Interesting.
Last couple of weeks, we celebrated corrections and law enforcement week. Thank you to everybody that stopped out to see us, other county employees, elected officials, and say thank you. The presence did not go unnoticed, it was very much appreciated. We did do the Ride the Lightning event for Shop with a Cop. That was two employees, we had eight of them actually volunteer to get taged if they raised too much money, enough money. We actually had two of them incredibly tie at the end, so we ended up taging two of them on the employee appreciation luncheon last week. But we raised over $1,500 for Shop with a Cop, so that all stayed local and was deposited this week, so. The ordinances, we've already went over. We got to give ISA scholarships, Indiana Sheriff's Association scholarships to two local students, Rihanna Yarber and Jacob Sager, for $750. This is issued by me through the Indiana Sheriff's Association. Rihanna is actually an employee of ours in the jail part-time. She is senior trying this fall, completing her senior year for a bachelor's degree. Jacob is a senior in high school this year. He'll be attending I U K for criminal justice in the fall. Reserve Deputy Clerk Croft graduated the Reserve Academy last week. The Reserve Academy is hosted by Coscosco County, they put on all the training. It's basically a condensed version of the law enforcement academy that we go through, but it's over 200 hours of volunteer time that they have to put in. He started the first week in January, he graduated last week. So it was a couple of evenings a week and then every other Saturday. It's a great program and it's, I mean, it's awesome that he was able to dedicate and willing to dedicate that amount of time for the reserve program, which is also volunteers, so, yeah. Thank him for that, so, and that's all I've got for that.
Interesting, thank you.
So I am going to present for Chad, he wasn't able to be here tonight. As part of that ordinance for the jail maintenance and everything, we've been looking at a maintenance building that we desperately needed since the jail was built. He's been reaching out and getting bids and things for a pool building. He's looking at a 40 by 80 pool building. Of all the bids that he had come in, Burns Building came in at the lowest at 103,000. So talking to the commissioners last night, they were all in agreeance that yes, it's something that we need and we need to move forward on. So I guess I'm looking for you guys for a motion to move forward with purchasing and building a maintenance building out there using the maintenance fund, the 4302 maintenance fund, which isn't going to cost Fulton County taxpayers any money.
This would be built out there?
Yeah, I think he was looking down the lane down by the tower, down that direction, I think is where he was looking. So, and I guess with that motion, I would be looking at, because there is concrete and electrical and finishing work. If we could do a motion that just says, do not exceed the available balance in the maintenance fund, and then that way, you know, because if he calls today and says, okay, we want to do this, it's going to be three to six months before they even start, you know, building a building and then electric and everything else, which will give ample time for that fund to build up, to cover all the expenses, so.
So the 103,000 is.
103.
The building itself?
Right, he was looking at roughly 16 for concrete, 16 for concrete and then electric, and I don't know if he's got a bid on electric yet or not.
Does that include the doors?
Yeah, that includes the doors. I don't know about openers, or does it include doors?
4302 at the end of last month was only showing like $7,431.
Yeah, because they haven't got it all moved over yet.
Was that moving it over from there?
Pardon me, from over the 4300, that's $700,000.
Okay, all right.
15% of that goes into maintenance, 15%.
Okay, all right, I'm with you, I'm sorry, I.
Good.
I wasn't putting that together.
Yeah, and I talked.
I wasn't thinking about those, that was the same ones.
She was under the impression that it was just at the start of '24 that that money got moved over, I think it was like 36,000 this morning when I looked. Yeah, but if you do the math on the 700,000 that's in there.
Be 109.
109 something that's in there now. We invoice another 100,000 next month, that's 115 grand that's going to go in there next month, so. So if we could just do it to, you know, we'll make sure that we don't go over what's available, so.
So not to exceed what? What's the what figure?
I wouldn't have any idea what the questions are.
Electricals, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Well, I don't have a clue, so you guys make it up.
It looks, yeah, it looks like, I've got 124.5 written down here, plus electric for 13. So the 124.5 would be 16 for concrete, and then it looks like 13,000 for electrical.
So totally this not to exceed what?
150.
150?
That would get us there, 124 and 13.
I'd say as long as we don't exceed.
What's in the fund?
What's in the fund?
Yeah.
I personally don't have a problem with it, as long as it's basically self-funded from the fund.
Yeah, no doubt.
Right.
And that's what we're looking at.
Right. I mean, however, we need to word that so that it comes out of that fund.
And it won't short that fund in the near future.
No, I don't, I don't foresee it. I think it's, you know, with what we're holding right now, it's going to rebound.
Well, we talked about it for the last couple of years, getting a maintenance building there.
Yeah, and that's the problem that we're running into is inspection time. We have to go around and hide all of our equipment. And that's when we know that the inspections are coming. If we get surprise inspections, we get dinged on mowers and gas cans and things in the Sallyport that have no business being in there, so. Or we've got things in hallways and chases that.
You must need some besides mowers or gas cans, 40 by 80, you want a lot of gas.
Well, that's what we're looking at, what we're looking at, I mean, we're looking at file storage. It's going to have the Mezzin, Mezzazin, whatever.
Mezzin.
Mezzazin.
Mezzanine.
Mezzanine, so.
So will this be built this year?
We're hoping, with your guys' blessing tonight, we're hoping to call them, say, yes, we're good to go, and then get put on the schedule. So, and again, when he talked to them in the spring, they were, I think, three to six out. I don't know if they're still at that or even further, but that's what we're wanting to get, is put on the schedule, so.
And then give your two prayers.
Right.
Lock it, lock it to pray.
You know how many bids he got, I'm just curious.
He said FBI, he said he reached out to FBI, they were more expensive than Twin Peaks, didn't get back with him, so birds came in the cheapest.
Any other questions?
I have none.
And I'll entertain a motion to approve Travis's request.
Motion to approve.
Steve's motion to approve, second. Randy, oh, thank you, Randy seconded, I couldn't see him, I couldn't. Randy seconded, all in favor? Seven zero.
And that request is to not exceed what's in the maintenance.
Exceed what's in.
Right, okay.
Back and forth a little bit there, so I sort of make sure. All right, that's all I've got.
As long as you keep us surprised.
Yeah, and I.
We don't want any surprises down the road.
No, I understand, it's going to come in stages. I mean, it's, you know, the electrical's going to be, obviously be afterwards, concrete's going to come in first, so, I mean, it'll be, it'll come in stages.
You've got 108 right now.
Yeah.
You know that.
Yeah, we know that, so we can lock in the birds, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Travis. Mr. Guyer.
Evening.
Good evening.
Contrary to popular belief, I don't have a lot.
You don't?
I don't.
Yay.
Just to give you an update on what they're doing, they've been patching holes, bringing the brush cutter, or changing a lot of culverts. They're working on some today even. They've been sawing the roads. We started chip sealing last week, actually. So, we went after, we got almost done with Liberty Township. We wanted to get after the detour that's coming around later this summer. So we went ahead and chipped that and got it prepped, so it will hopefully hold the sacred 25 traffic when they cut it loose on there. Because last time when they cut it loose, it destroyed the road, and then Endot paved it. Repaving that, so we wanted to preserve it and try to keep it from being destroyed again.
Do we have the same agreement with Endot?
Yeah. But it's a lot better road, last time it was about this thin. It was an old chip seal road. Now it's got, you know, that much asphalt on it, so. Should be a lot different this time around, we hope. We did make our pug for the year. They pulled out yesterday from making that central payday comes up. The Love and Sport, Pug Mill makes that. So we've got a big pile out there in the back lot. So when we get that chipping this season, we'll go to pugging. Talking about the detours, sacred 14, you guys probably already know, it's closed at different times west of 17. So we've got two detours for that, going around on 550 south and 400 north. So dealing with that, and then back down to 25, they're going to close that here sometime between June, July. Don't know exactly, whenever they get the bridge at Fulton, then they can move up to Ludbury Care, which is about 500 south on 25. Detour traffic around the country on our road, so.
Is that there by Harry Richter's place?
Yes, yeah, right there north of his house, or Ludbrook's house. Other than that, I wanted to talk to you, you know, I talked to the commissioners last night about purchasing a flail mower. I have it budgeted, so I don't really need any approval, but just letting you know. The quote I got was for, I think, nearly 13,000.
What's a flail mower?
Yeah, it's, one, it's got knives on a drum, and it cuts the grass this way. What we've been using is disc bind, which are basically hay binds. This has got a lot less wear parts. It's something we're looking at trying, we're always looking for something better. It costs a little bit more, but we've spent a believable amount on repairs and maintenance on that there, so. Hoping to put a little, a couple more thousand up front will save us many thousands through the season.
About time, downtime from sitting there when it breaks up and waiting for the mechanics, I've been there, done it.
Yeah, I have too. Mowing's a, and we've been mowing, we started mowing the 1st of May. So we've been out there mowing, probably can't hardly tell sometimes because with the rain and heat, the grass has been growing. We do have three mowers going every day, so. It takes a while to get over 800 miles. And then the last thing I wanted to talk to you about, and I didn't send it to you ahead of time, but it was kind of similar to the auditor, I have a request on deployment. Leslie, as you know, the clerk, she's leaving July 11. And we're advertising now for her replacement. I've gotten many applicants already, but we haven't chosen anyone, but. I've gotten many applicants already, but we haven't chosen anyone, but what I'm asking is, you know, we have the two-week policy for prostrating, I'd like to extend that, possibly an extra two weeks if we could. Her job, there's a lot of moving parts in her job, and we done this back when Linda retired, and I'm asking to do it again up, up to a month, I don't know if I'll have someone hired in that amount of time, but if I can give you a blessing to hire somebody early.
And you got the funding?
I would have to transfer it from overtime or something, but I can, I can easily cover the cost, not have to come to you and pay, take money out of the rainy day or anything.
You got lots of money left in motion, anyway.
Yeah, there's quite a bit left in that time, so.
There's no last one.
I, it's, it's not gonna be an issue, just a simple transfer.
That's a lot to learn out there.
There, like I say, there's a lot of moving parts, just to go through claims or payroll once.
Isn't it enough?
No, I'd like to at least have twice.
Very lucky to have Leslie last year.
I've been, I've been blessed, I had Linda and Leslie, they both have done me a great service, so. I'm hoping I can find somebody just as equally as good.
Any comment from anybody?
You don't feel like you can do that job?
I don't wanna do that job, I'll just be brutally honest about it, but I'm, I'm tied to it pretty good, so.
He has our blessing?
I think he has our blessing.
Yeah.
I probably have to have a motion on that.
I'll make the motion to allow you to extend the training for the clerk's position from two weeks to four weeks.
Phil made the motion, slide and see second, all in favor? Seven-zero.
And that's all I have for the season.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Ms. Gail.
Actually, I only have two things. The eighteen thousand dollars, yeah, eighteen thousand dollars from the E M P G grant should be deposited in County General, and that's the Emergency Management Performance Grant, that pays for a portion of our salary. And actually, that's just it, don't have anything else, where are you talking about again this?
Well, I wanna, I've worked with Gail through this whole ambulance thing, and I appreciate your knowledge and your input. We, hopefully, we can see the light at the end of the tunnel, let's not train. Let's hope that after all we've been, the ups and downs, we can get this thing behind us, and the citizens of Fulton County are better off for it, so.
Stressful.
Sure. Appreciate your help.
Thank you.
Back to that.
Pardon?
On the ambulance, what, you said it's four and a half years, I might have misunderstood the commissioner's last name. Is it one point two for the next two, and then twenty-five, twenty-seven?
It's one point two for, you'll pay six hundred thousand from July to December thirty-first. And then they get, next year starts one point two, obviously, you start your year, and then the last year is nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Okay, is that, so it's one point two the next two years?
Correct.
And then the third, okay, you said.
The fourth, the fourth year is nine hundred and some thousand, the other three are one point two.
It's an actual three and a half year contract.
You said four and a half year contract.
It is a four and a half year contract, 'cause we signed it from July one.
So twenty-eight will be nine fifty also?
No, it's, the last year will be the nine.
I'm wrong.
It's three and a half years, according to the.
Yeah, it would've been four if you started paying them first.
Six hundred thousand, one point two, one point two, and nine fifty, that's three and a half.
I thought it was four years, four and a half years.
I think that was, I think that was the goal, if that's what we placed January one, it would've been four years.
Well, per conversations, the attorneys left it as is, three and a half years, so.
Okay, alright, then I'm mistaken, then I'm, then I'm mistaken.
That, that came over yesterday.
Okay, then I didn't, because it was four and a half, because we started January one with a four-year contract.
That's why I wanted to clarify.
No, I'm sorry, no, my mistake.
So it's six hundred, one-two, one-two, nine fifty.
That's the way I heard it.
Everybody's nodding, yep, okay, thank you. Okay.
Okay. Amy, you got it?
Brochures are out, so new brochures if anybody needs them, we have two thousand, so free for the patients.
Brushes for what?
For Fulton County Hope, so all the resource brochures, so we have two thousand, because we went through the one thousand in, I think, two months this year, so we ordered an additional two thousand, so those are, can be obtained by emailing F C Hope four-six-nine-seven-five at gmail dot com, and they are no cost to anybody that would like them, so as many as you would need. We received word at the Fulton County Hope quarterly meeting, which happened May fifteenth, that the Bean Home has agreed to hire a part-time person to be established here in Fulton County to help with domestic violence situations, so they are working out those details, and we are needing to meet with them to finalize what that looks like, but after all the research and conversation, they have agreed to do that, so. And then we have lots of other things that we are working on, but those are the two things I think that are the most important right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. No other compartments? Does anyone have a chance to look over the minutes?
Yeah.
If there are no changes, or anything to discuss, I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes as written. Pete moved to approve the minutes, second?
I'll second.
Phil second, and all in favor? Seven-zero, thank you. We got a couple of transfers. You okay?
Should place a sign?
Yeah.
There it is.
I'm sorry.
Alright, fine.
Uh, transfer, first transfer we have is from computer maintenance software to the prosecutor's office for twelve hundred dollars. Goes into office supply for twelve hundred dollars, our office bought several bookshelves to increase our storage and organization at the office. I do not anticipate we will need to make a similar purchase for some time. Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Phil approved, second? Randy second, and all in favor? Seven-zero, those we do not have to sign, zero. Second, transfers from Fund one-one-six-one to the Health Department, zero-one-nine-seven. Health Department liaison, request eighteen thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars for machinery and equipment. Eighteen thousand, seven forty-five, the expiration is claim for LifeLink for A E D machines and LifeVac for schools in Fulton County. Not enough budgeted machinery and equipment to cover this claim. I will entertain a questions, I will entertain a motion to approve.
So move.
Phil moved to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Chase second, and all in favor? Seven-zero, thank you. And a last transfer is from Fund eleven-sixty-one to the Health Department, zero-one-nine-seven. Repair and maintenance supplies, twenty-four and eighty-four, and then the contractual services for twenty-four and eighty-four. The expiration, claim for Woodlawn Hospital Services for compassionate and health center patients. Not enough budgeted contractual services to cover this claim. Any questions? I will entertain a motion to approve. Pete motion to approve, Lori seconded, all in favor? Seven-zero, thank you, I'll sign those later. And then we've got some additional appropriations. This fund is from Community Host Fee Revenue, or Revenue Fund. And then it's for, and it goes to the office, or from the Office of Communications. This is account forty-four, one-zero-zero, the equipment, hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Portable radios, V P five-four-three-zero dash P one-one dash G slash twenty for the Fulton County Sheriff, thirty for the volunteers to be assigned to responders, the radios are county assets. Any questions? Anybody? I will entertain a motion to approve. Steve moved to approve.
I'll second.
Phil seconded, all in favor? Six-zero, and Pete upstands. Thank you very much, that's the one we got there, we got all that done, we got that done?
Yes, we got it signed.
So, yes, we did, we gotta sign this. So, on to old business, Pete?
No, sir.
Randy?
No, sir.
Chase?
No, sir.
Lori? Steve? Phil?
I have none.
I have none. Order numbers have any? Anyone old business? And we'll move on to new business, Pete?
Um, sir.
Randy?
No, sir.
Chase? Lori?
Uh, no.
Steve?
It's older and newer, but I just wanna, we got all the flags up, up in graves all through the county, I mentioned this last night, we're all here, but we're all, we've got all, last couple, weekend after, we've been working on it, got it all done by Wednesday, and we're all gonna be going out, all veterans for honor properly, and.
Thank you for spirit, I appreciate it.
Thank the county and city for the generous donation to that, I'll give it to the deputy.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you, Phil?
The only thing I have is, the county's portion of the host fee fund for February, March this year is seventy thousand, two hundred and twenty-two dollars and forty-five cents. That's all I have.
Uh, new business I have is two things, and of course, I can't find it, but anyway. I have an annual report that we receive every year from Logan's Fort Memorial Hospital, if anybody's interested, you're more than welcome to read through it. And also, I have a letter, here it is, and this is to all council members. It is a called meeting on June twenty-second, twenty-twenty-four, at the Renaissance Hotel in Indianapolis, on the north side of Reddington Street. It's a meeting called to review new legislation, professional development, sharing best practices. If you are interested to attend, get ahold of Christina for the auditor's office, so she can start a transportation request, and also, they serve a meal. And so I just wanted to let everyone know, if anyone's interested, I'll give you the, the letter, and forget with Christina to decide whether or not you wanna go or not. It's a day-long affair. And also, and I will read this, 'cause each council member that resides at least fifty miles from the conference location is entitled to reimbursement for lodging expense, which is at the Renaissance. So if you're interested, again, you have to get ahold of Christina, so she can set up, 'cause she'll pay for it through the county, so we don't have to pay taxes on it. Other than that, any new business? Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Lori moved to adjourn, second, Pete seconded, all in favor? Thank you very much.